Good morning Chairman, we are now live.
Thank you Tom. Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee. I am councillor Jimmy Brooks, the Chair of the Committee and sitting to my right is councillor Maggie Cullen. In addition to welcoming all members of the Committee to this meeting, I would like to welcome councillor Steve Clegg, Executive Councillor, Adult Care and Health; councillor Marie Hume, Executive Support Councillor, Adult Care and Health; and Martin Samuels, Executive Director of Adult Care and Community Wellbeing. Before we begin, there is a standard announcement. If we have a fire alarm, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors into the reception and assemble in the car park at the front of the building and await further instructions. The audiovisual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcast live via the county council's website and all your comments will remain accessible online. Please have mobiles, laptops and iPads on silent mode, the hearing loop is now activated. Requests to speak will be collated by the top table. Please indicate early when you wish to speak and councillor Cullen will make a note in order. Additionally, for your information, we have scheduled a 10 minute comfort break after Agenda Item Six today because I've got a feeling it might be a long meeting. We now move on to the formal agenda. Agenda item one, Tom, have we got any apologies for absence?
Thank you Chairman, we have apologies from councillors Haig and Welbury from the Health Scrutiny Committee.
Thank you Tom.
Councillor Sharmeen Morgan as well please, also sends her apologies, thank you.
Thank you councillor Clever. Is there any more? No, thank you very much. Agenda item two, declarations of members' interests. Do any members wish to declare any interests? No, thank you very much for that. Agenda item three, minutes of the meeting of Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee held on the 22nd of October. This is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record. Please turn to pages five to 12 of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposer? Thank you councillor Reeve. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Bean, thank you very much. We will now have a vote. Could all in favour please raise their hands? Any against? Any abstentions? No, that is carried, thank you. Those have been agreed as a correct record. Agenda item four, announcements from the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. Chairman's announcements, which I have got one here, I would like to provide some feedback from the executive on November the 4th. The executive considered the report on active recovery beds, a summary of this council's scrutiny of the proposal from the 22nd of October. It was presented by councillor Maggie Cullen, the leader of the council, councillor Sean Matthews asked that his thanks be passed to the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee for our efforts and the work that we do. I'd also like to thank Maggie Cullen for standing in for me at last minute of the last Adult Care and Public Health meeting. Thank you Maggie. Moving on, executive council announcements. Are there any announcements from councillor Steve Clegg, Executive Councillor for Adult Care and Public Health?
Thank you Chairman, as you say it could be a long meeting so I'll be quiet for now, thank you.
Thank you councillor Clegg. Martin, do you have an announcement to offer please?
I do. So as members of the Committee will be aware, I've been keeping up to date on what's been happening with the CQC inspections so I'll try to keep it quite brief. So we have submitted all of the information requests that the CQC asked for, that was well over 100 documents. We have provided them with the case files, several thousand case files that they asked for and also with our self-assessment of the organisation. As part of our preparation for the CQC process, we held a challenge conversation on the 5th of November. This was a process that's been organised through the East Midlands branch of ADAS, the Association of Directors of Adult Social Services. All of the authorities across the region are going through a challenge conversation process. For Lincolnshire, because of the link with CQC, we were the first in the region to go through that process. It's a process run by external experts. The person that was running that process is, used to be a director in another council. I should say that the cost of that process is funded by the Department of Health and Social Care, no cost to the county council. We found it a really helpful process to have someone from outside the organisation look at our data and challenge us on what that data was saying and to help us to develop our narrative about what our performance is. Worth noting that the external challenger was particularly impressed by the wellbeing service and noted that it was pretty clear that that was a service which isn't available in many other council areas, which was really important in reducing and diverting demand for formal adult social care. So it received a lot of focus in that process. We then, on the 19th of November, we had a three hour senior leadership meeting with the CQC inspectors. This was an online meeting where we went through with a detailed, you can imagine in three hours, a detailed explanation and exploration of our approach and our structures and our systems as a preparation for the inspection. Today, in fact, I think literally now, there is a data and performance meeting taking place where our finance and commercial and performance team are engaging with the inspectors to go through the numbers and that again is I think a two or three hour meeting. We will then have the inspectors on site, a team of six inspectors will be on site from mid-morning on the 9th of December, so Tuesday of next week and they'll be with us until the early afternoon of Thursday of that week. And we have arranged for them to see a very significant number of people from across the system where they will interview people and collect information. We are hoping that we will receive the draft report from the CQC early February, there or thereabouts and that will be the first indication we will get of what their assessment of Lincolnshire is. And the hope is that that document will then be published just before the end of March of next year and that will then be the first point at which we'll be able to speak publicly about what the findings are. CQC are extremely firm that they should be the organisation that release the report and nothing can be said in any public forum about it before that. But we will then at the scrutiny meeting after that, bring the report and bring a response to it from the service.
Thank you for that announcement Martin, that's fantastic. I'd like to now invite members to ask any questions pertinent to the announcement only, nothing that is relevant to business considered later in the agenda please. This should be very brief and members may not make statements as part of this, just questions please. Do we have any questions? Councillor Lee, thank you.
It's just an observation, there's robust scrutiny for you.
Thank you. Right, now we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, Integrated Lifestyle Service Performance Update. This item is found on pages 13 to 22 of your agenda pack. The report is on the current services provided by the Integrated Lifestyle Service. I would like to welcome members of the Health Scrutiny Committee who are in the chamber or online for the consideration of this item only. Welcome everybody. The report will be introduced by Martin Samuels, Executive Director and taking the committee through the report will be Derek Ward, Director of Public Health. Martin, over to you.
Thank you Chair, so just to say a few words, members of the scrutiny committee will be well aware of the pressures on the county council's budget and the need for us to ensure that all spend is directed in the most effective and efficient manner. The Integrated Lifestyle Service represents an important proportion of the public health spend and the council has the opportunity to review the approach taken to that service given that the existing contract is ending and we're sort of, while we are within contract, I wouldn't want the council, the committee to misinterpret what I was saying to say that we are outside contract, but we are in a period of contract where the contract is coming to an end and there is the opportunity to review and reflect. As the committee is again well aware, there is a public consultation ongoing about the future of the Integrated Lifestyle Service. That is drawing to a close, we've had several hundred responses to that consultation which will be analysed in due course. A report looking to the future will go to the executive on the 3rd of February and this committee will have the opportunity to consider that on the 28th of January. So that really will be the opportunity to look forwards. Today really is an opportunity to look back and consider the current service and then for the committee to offer views and suggestions in terms of areas of strength of the current service and areas for improvement, which we can then draw upon in preparing that report for the executive. So just wanting to set the scene there, I'll now hand over to Derek as the Director of Public Health to take us through the performance of the current Integrated Lifestyle Service. Derek.
Thanks Martin. So Martin's already set the context, the paper I'll take as read so I'll just pull out a few salient points because I think the useful part will be the conversation if that's all right. So the Integrated Lifestyle Service, which is known in Lincolnshire as One U. Lincolnshire, that branding, One U, is a national department of health and social care brand so we make sure we align with that national branding. Has been, or was commissioned in 2019, so we're into the sixth year. And what the Integrated Lifestyle Service does is it delivers a range of support services for people who want to take action to improve their own health. It's very much a voluntary, we're not forcing it on anybody. Anybody who wants to take agency and change their behaviours that maybe are causing them to have poorer health or will in the future create the situation where they've got poorer health are supported via the Integrated Lifestyle Service. What the report outlines is the scope and rationale for the Integrated Lifestyle Service, where we are in terms of performance and cost effectiveness, using national and international benchmarks and then a little bit about the health and economic impacts of lifestyle risk factors in Lincolnshire. So basically what the impact of ill health is across Lincolnshire. We've also got some figures in there which I won't go through here but happy to pick up afterwards. I've also just to introduce Andy Fox, who's consultant public health and who leads on this so if we've got any detailed questions around current performance, Andy will be happy to chip in there. Beginning of the paper just talks about the statutory basis, really important in scrutiny, understand that the funding for the Integrated Lifestyle Service comes from the Public Health Ring Fence Grant and we describe a little bit there about the background to that. But in effect, the funding for the Integrated Lifestyle Service and the whole public health grant transferred from the NHS in 2012 into local authorities along with the responsibilities that are outlined in the paper, so that's a little bit of background there. The core of the Integrated Lifestyle Service is four key interventions that we support individuals who want to take action around. One is to quit smoking, the second one is to eat well and lose weight, the third one is to be more physically active and the fourth is to reduce alcohol consumption. Important to flag up that in terms of reducing alcohol consumption, this is for the mild to moderate range of alcohol consumption. If people have significant challenges with alcohol consumption, we have a dedicated substance misuse service that provides support in that sense. So it's a different end of the spectrum I guess around alcohol. The whole ethos, the psychological ethos for the Integrated Lifestyle Service is we aim to support people who want to change, we don't aim to stop particular behaviours. Really strong evidence base about why that's important. People are the ones who smoke, people are the ones who maybe eat the wrong sort of food or too much of that food and it's individuals who maybe drink too much. And often, an individual does more than one of those things. And so the whole argument behind having an integrated lifestyle service is that somebody may be referred or somebody may seek support from One U Lincolnshire because they're a smoker. We know that legally, smoking is the single worst thing you can do for your health so they may refer themselves because they want support to quit smoking. But often, individuals may be overweight at the same time and they might be worried that they're going to put on more weight if they quit smoking, which is often one of the things that can happen. Historically, if you have a stop smoking service, they can only help with the stop smoking bit. An integrated lifestyle service helps the person. So if they are worried about they're going to put more weight on if they quit smoking, the Integrated Lifestyle Service will help that individual if they choose to, to lose weight first or to lose weight at the same time as quitting smoking. And it's an integrated approach, that's the key point that I just wanted to pull out about the Integrated Lifestyle Service, it is different to other services elsewhere and is different to the service that we had prior to 2019 in Lincolnshire. I won't go through the performance data there but I'll sort of just pick out the headlines. The headline figures really are, over the five years, 75,000 people have been supported by the Integrated Lifestyle Service and more than 50,000 have achieved a positive outcome, whether that's stopping smoking, losing a significant amount of weight, increasing their physical activity. Sometimes that 50,000 is the same person who achieves two or three or even four different changes but that 50,000 over the last five years is the figure to recognise and that's of adult population. So we're talking probably about one in eight people within Lincolnshire have been supported in one way or another by the Integrated Lifestyle Service. The figures are on page 16 and 17 about the high level outcomes but if you've got any detailed questions, we can pick those up. Going on to the funding, you'll see that the ILS, the Integrated Lifestyle Service, is funded from the Public Health Ring Fence Grant, a little bit over £3 million. We spend £3 million a year on the Integrated Lifestyle Service from the Public Health Grant. By spending that money, we also attract in half a million pounds from the NHS, which is the Integrated Care Board funding that they add to that pot. And because we spend the money that we've historically spent around stop smoking services, we also attract an additional £1.14 million in from the Department of Health and Social Care that is part of the national push to create a smoke-free generation. So as well as the 3.17, we attract 1.64 million, that's this year. We haven't yet been given the figures for next year but I expect it will be those figures or slightly above with inflation. Quite difficult to try to break down how much of that is spent on individual quits or weight loss because of exactly the point I've just made about this being an integrated service. But we've estimated because, if nothing else, we have to report to the Department of Health about how many people are quitting smoking. So we've estimated the sort of figures which are at the bottom of page 17. Again, really happy to go into detail in the question session there. And then previously, we had come through scrutiny, gone to the previous executive about recommissioning and procurement, as Martin said, the service has been running five years now, six years so we do naturally get into a recommissioning cycle. And the details of where we are with that process are in the paper, including the fact that executives have asked for a follow-up paper which will come to scrutiny in next month, yes. We are in December now, aren't we? So it will come in January about options. Final thing really just to pick out from the paper is the estimated prevalence of some of these behaviours in Lincolnshire and the impact in both the NHS and social care. And we've estimated those at the bottom of page 19. Really, really difficult in my job, one of the challenges with public health is if we do a good job, bad things don't happen. And then when people say, well how can you demonstrate that you've done X, Y and Z? Well we can't because the bad thing didn't happen. What we've done there with the estimated annual costs in Lincolnshire is we've used all the national and international best evidence. And we've seen in other parts of the country where changes have happened, there have been impacts on things like adult care for example. If somebody is a smoker, the evidence suggests they are going to need adult social care 10 years earlier than if they're a non-smoker, that's just what the evidence says. So there is an impact of helping people quit smoking. Clearly, as I said, smoking is the single worst legal thing you can do to yourself. It's a 50/50 chance whether smoking is going to kill you. But it's also highly likely that smoking is going to significantly impact on your healthy life expectancy. COPD, cancers, cardiovascular diseases are all made significantly worse by the fact that you're a smoker. And the Integrated Lifestyle Service tends to target working age adults and obviously, working age adults who are smokers, who maybe do develop COPD or have a heart attack, may then not be able to work any longer and become out of work and depend on state support. So there is a very strong evidence base, an economic argument that we describe in the paper at a high level but again, happy to go through the details a little bit more in the discussion. The conclusions are there, I'll assume everybody's read those. As Martin's already said, we are just finishing our 12 week public consultation which has had a lot of comments, we will be collating those and the summary plus all the detail will go into the paper that will come here and then we'll go on to the executive. I'll stop there if that's okay.
Thank you very much Derek and thank you Martin. I am now going to invite members to ask any questions. No, sorry. Thank you for your introduction, I will now invite members present, including members of the Health Scrutiny Committee to make any relevant statements and ask questions. Councillor Cullen has a list which I'll go through at the moment. If you do wish to speak, please raise your hand. I will have two questions per councillor at the moment and I will go through and make sure everybody has asked every question that they want to ask. Thank you. Councillor Reeve.
Thank you, thank you for the report. I was interested in what gets people on the pathway for the ILS support. Is it some sort of wake-up call, do they have a health event, a lifestyle event? Or is it government advertising with the government driving towards prevention? I'm just wondering what gets people on that pathway, how successful is the prevention strategy of the government? Or is it, okay, I've had a heart attack, I need to do something about this, thank you.
Thank you councillor Reeve, it's a bit of everything to be honest. Sometimes it is national programmes and what we tend to do. So there's things like Stoptober, that is a national programme. That will be run by the Department of Health and Social Care nationally and advertised on TV and on radio and we'll do local campaigns that fit in with that. Ran through with councillor Clegg, we have a 12 month comms programme to make sure that we're pushing those messages so that people in Lincolnshire are aware of it. Frequently, there's a referral from a GP, so somebody will go into their GP maybe because they're due for their health check, which again is one of those things that the council has a statutory responsibility to commission. And the GP will say, you're a smoker, you need to quit. And they will say that, they won't beat around the bush. The person will then say, right, okay, yeah, I want to quit, how can you help me? And that's where they'll get the referral into One U Lincolnshire. And sometimes it's things like a family who want to, sorry, a husband and wife who want to start a family and the female, the mother, is a smoker and she wants to quit. We have very high rates of smoking, time of delivery in Lincolnshire significantly worse than the England average and so we've got a real targeted push on getting women who want to start a family through the Integrated Lifestyle Service so that they will quit smoking. So there's a whole range of different reasons. When I was a kid, the reason my dad gave up is because as four kids, we just pestered him so much. But he had about six, seven, eight different goes before he quit. And that's one of the challenges of quitting smoking. Nicotine is a highly addictive substance and all of the evidence suggests that you need a structured support mechanism to help people to quit as quickly as possible. Even so, people may take two or three goes before they actually quit but it is the single best thing a smoker is going to do for their health.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Reeve. Councillor Bean.
Thank you Chair. I just happened to notice that there's no mention of substance misuse within the integrated system. I understand you've got a separate process for that but I just feel that we're missing something here because all addictions have a starting point and a starting point would be casual use. And I think because there is a stigma attached with substance misuse, if we could pick these people up earlier as part of this process and then signpost them to get help, I think we could head a lot of that off and I think we're just missing an opportunity by not including it in this.
Maybe I'll start and I wonder whether Andy wants to jump in on this one as well. But I think it's a really good point and it goes back to that bit about, in my role, my professional advice to you, it's really difficult because in effect, there's a question there. How many people who are smoking and maybe drinking to excess at the moment who the Integrated Lifestyle Service have supported and have changed their behaviours have avoided going on to develop other behaviours maybe that become illicit substances that longer term would require our substance misuse service to intervene, which as you will understand, costs a lot more. You know, community detox costs £5,000, £6,000 at least per unit. So I can't answer the how many have we avoided but the earlier we can intervene absolutely is a mantra in public health, that if we can support people to change behaviours early on in their behaviour, then we're going to avoid worse behaviours potentially developing. So absolutely, there is a link between our substance misuse service and our integrated lifestyle service but generally, we want to intervene as early as possible. Andy, anything to add?
Thank you. Yeah, no, very good point councillor Bean. As Derek has said, fundamentally, you want both. So the targeted service for substance misuse is going to be a lot more expensive. If we just think about this purely in terms of cost and cost effectiveness for the public pound. That one costs a lot more per unit, the intensity of work required with the individuals is much greater. Ideally, people who are struggling with addictive behaviours, if you could intervene years before when maybe the problems are less acute and they have, you know, addiction to low level alcohol use perhaps and indeed nicotine addiction. And you can give them some basic tools to use in terms of, and this is one of the things that the Integrated Lifestyle does, is it adopts a health coaching approach. So the idea is, when people want to change, you're giving them some skills, tools, helping them to understand their own lives, their own health and then giving them the ability to actually make better choices for their own health going forward, obviously if they want to. And that is far more cost effective if you like, to intervene earlier at that point. Now obviously, you still need both because some people very clearly aren't going to come anywhere near the Integrated Lifestyle Service, you know, and they're going to just in the end present to substance misuse services when they have serious, you know, narcotic addictions etc. So ideally, from a public health cost effectiveness perspective, the more you can, left shift we call it, the more you can invest earlier in that cycle, the better value for the public pound you're going to get. But obviously, you still need that acute end as well. So yeah, both and would be the sort of the public health theory on that one.
Yeah, please. Thank you Chair. Yeah, you tend to find that people that are prone to addiction tend to be susceptible to more than one addiction. And I think, as you pointed out, the cost of substance detox and treatment is very, very high. And so if we could catch them earlier when they're just a cat, because you tend to find that most people start with low level drugs like cannabis and most of the people who start with that tend to be smokers. So if we can ask the question when they're coming for these issues and maybe signpost and start to avoid that higher cost later on. And I think the other one we also need to look at is gambling addiction. Because that's another addiction which has a stigma and it can lead to serious mental health issues, which again, has a high cost later on. So I think it's something else we need to be considering as part of the integrated system. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bean. Thank you Andy and Derek. Councillor Lee, have you got a couple of questions? I will come back to you afterwards, thank you.
I was going to say that and before we start, can I just clarify, I'm not defecting to reform. I can't hear very well and if people don't speak into the microphones, I really don't hear most of what they say so if I sit here, I can lip read. Right, at the beginning of the agenda, on page 13, the summary talks about when this was discussed at OSMB on the 28th of August and the members, and I think I was one of them. We requested a report, impact assessments to, covering the scope, need for and benefit of the ILS to benefit in informed future decision-making. And my question, I also understand, and, right, there's still no impact assessments within this report in relation to the impact on GP services and social care provision, just to name two. GP services and social care provision, just to name two. And the whole point of having health scrutiny here today was so that we could talk about that. And I know someone will say, oh yes, but you're going to get them later on the 28th of January. That's not the point. We should have had them today. It says that in this report, we should have them. So my first question is, can I have clarification, please? If those impact assessments have currently been prepared and not given to us, or if they haven't been completed? Because I would like them and if they'd been prepared, my intention is to submit an FOI and get those impact assessments because I do not want to wait till the 28th of January for them. And my second question is that before decommissioning a service, my understanding is that there has to be impact assessments carried out legally, otherwise the authority might be subject to a judicial review. Can you clarify that, please? So that's two questions. Have there currently been impact assessment done? Don't tell me later, I don't want them later. And do we have to do them or we might be liable to judicial review? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lee.
So in answer to your first question, yes, we have an impact assessment that's already been done. Clearly, we would want to update that with the outcome of the consultation at the moment. Secondly, my understanding is if the decision were—if one of the options for the decision were to be to decommission, then yes, the impact assessment needs to be part of that pack so that the executive, when they make the decision, have all of the information available to them. Whether that then—if that doesn't happen, it's open to judicial review, I'll pass that over to the legal team. But my expectation would be, from previous papers that we've done, we would put in an impact assessment so that the executive would have all the information they require to make the decision.
Very briefly, just please indulge me. Given that we've had several hundred responses from the whole of the county of Lincolnshire, I can't imagine there's going to be a massive amount of updating to do. But my question, there are two options. Will you give me those impact assessments now or do I need to submit an FOI?
We have an Integrated Lifestyle Impact Assessment, so my understanding is we—
And I think it's worth noting, if I could draw your attention to a number of the annexes and the links. So in the report, there are links to a range of impact assessments that have been done. I'm not sure we have anything more recent. So the University of Lincoln evaluation, there's a link to that. All of the documentation that we have, we've provided links to that. I don't think we've got anything more recent than that, that's finalised.
That's fine, Martin. I'll have—if the impact assessments are there, that's fine. I don't need an FOI, I'll have a look. But I didn't see those, thank you. I don't understand why it doesn't mention that in the report, but thank you.
Thank you councillor Lee. councillor Kendrick.
Thanks, Chair. Firstly, an observation, obviously, the idea of having an integrated service is, I think, a very good idea. And the other thing I think is the emphasis you made on willing to change behaviours. When I worked in the NHS, although I wasn't a clinician, I worked with mental health patients. And I always recall a chap whose brother died from an overdose and he said to me, I thought, well, same might happen to me, so I must make a decision to change my behaviour. And that came to my mind, just reading and hearing what you said this morning. My question is, on weight management services, I know people have used the service, but I think possibly, and you can say whether it is or not, a hangover from Covid, it was all down on the telephone and they were rung up and saying, you know, how much weight have you lost this week? And you could tell any figure you liked out of the air and say, oh yeah, I'm doing very well, I've lost three pounds this week and next week I've lost four pounds and so on. There's no way of actually judging that. You're taking them on trust. I assume that is a hangover from Covid, but I'd like to be reassured, perhaps we are going to move to more face-to-face interactions as regards weight management. But obviously, I think the evidence that you presented in terms of impact and prevention is very important because as the old saying goes, prevention is better than cure. And the impact on adult social care and health services in general is significant, particularly in terms of people suffering abuse problems. And I can understand the issue about substance misuse, which is a specialist area. I had colleagues who worked in that area. So I think my question was about the weight management one, because it seemed a little bit sort of spurious to just ring people up and say, how are you doing this week? Whereas I can see in the other issues that the service is a comprehensive one, which I think is fundamental because as you say, if you have a smoking issue and you put weight on, you need help to reduce weight. But it is picking up on the key element, which is a willingness to change behaviours, which I think is significant. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you councillor Kendrick.
Thank you councillor Kendrick. I'll give the headlines, I guess, and then I'll pass over to Andy to talk a little bit about the weight management in detail. We did commission the service in 2019 and of course, Covid hit. So as the service went live, it did become very much online, not exclusively, but the majority was online. That has changed over the past few years. And you'll see from the report that what we've got roughly, about 20,000 people access support around healthy weight and nearly 14,000 of them have lost more than 5% of their body weight, which was the—is the chief medical officer recommendation. So we do have those figures and we know that's how much people have actually lost rather than them just telling somebody over the phone. But Andy can talk about how the service is run now. It was absolutely different during Covid, understandably.
Thank you. Yeah, just to provide some reassurance, actually, where possible, the service is always face-to-face when it comes to weight management. The simple reason is, we tend to—the service tends to subcontract with local weight management providers that you'll be familiar with, Weight Watchers and Slimming World. Because, and this is clear from a public health evidence base, they are the most effective evidence-based interventions. And actually, the great thing about Weight Watchers and Slimming World is that people go to those and, you know, for Slimming World, which is one you use a lot, there'll be somebody who is from the community, who's probably had a weight loss journey themselves, they're very skilled, they're running the group themselves, they have that sort of franchise from Slimming World. And then what One U do, they step in. And for people that couldn't afford otherwise to access it, they pay that access fee. But all of the expertise, if you like, and the skill in terms of working with the local people to help them understand how to change their diet, how to become more physically active, that tends to come from the local people in the community who run the Slimming World groups. So it is often face-to-face and that's the reason, I think, we've seen completions of the interventions of the 12-week course rise steadily from—I've got the sort of information in front of me now, sort of from the 2019, it was actually lower than it is now in 2025 in terms of the percentage completing the full course. So actually, engagement with the weight management intervention has improved than it was pre-Covid. So we're actually doing better than we were pre-Covid in terms of weight management engagement.
And if I can just come in on one point, because I'm really conscious that where the council is overall, from a budget perspective, is in a really challenged position. We need to get a balanced budget of the medium-term financial plan. Public health, we are absolutely cognisant of that and supportive of that. I think what Andy's just described is, we are always really, really conscious of trying to maximise the impact of the taxpayers' money. Whilst this comes from a different route because of the public health ring fence grant, we are absolutely—we all recognise that it's taxpayers' money. And by using the existing infrastructure of Slimming World and Weight Watchers that's already there, it's an efficient way for One U Lincolnshire to deliver what is part of their core contract, rather than them trying to create all of that infrastructure themselves, which would clearly be more costly.
Thank you. councillor Smith.
Thank you, chairman. I was just wondering, going forward, is vaping going to come under the anti-smoking help service? As it seems that this is becoming a large problem and youngsters seem to be starting at quite an early age vaping. And I was just wondering if that's going to be incorporated into that? Because they're now discovering the damage that has been done to lungs from vaping. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. As part of the Integrated Lifestyle Service around the stop smoking component, I need to be really clear here. If somebody is smoking tobacco, generally that's cigarettes, but sometimes it could be a pipe or it could be a cigar, and the only way they're going to stop smoking combustible tobacco is for them to move on to a nicotine vape, One U Lincolnshire will help them to make that switch. And all of the evidence base supports that because it's about harm reduction. It's not about getting rid of it completely, unfortunately. It's about reducing risk. And by moving from somebody smoking combustible tobacco in whatever form, down to using a nicotine vape that they know what the components are, that is a reduction in their risk. However, if somebody doesn't smoke, the absolute advice from everybody in public health, the department of health, every medic you're going to meet is, don't start. The addictive substance in cigarettes is nicotine, the same addictive substance is in vaping. So absolutely, we don't want people who don't smoke to start vaping and we would absolutely try to stop them doing that. And obviously, national government legislation is coming forwards around that. But if somebody is smoking combustible tobacco and the only way they're going to stop doing that is to move over to vapes, then One U Lincolnshire and all of our advice would support that switch. And we get actually a programme, which Andy can talk about a little bit, from central government to support that, so I'll pass over to Andy.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Derek. Yeah, who knows, again, good point. The rise of vaping in children and young people is definitely a concern. Nobody should take up vaping from a health perspective unless they're using it as an aid to quit something more harmful, which is, you know, smoking tobacco. So certainly, children using vapes is a concern, it is addictive. And yeah, you're right, there is some emerging evidence around lung damage, you know. But to be entirely clear, it is the products of combustion, it's the smoke in a cigarette that gives you lung cancer and COPD. So vapes are safer if you're a smoker. For—in order to try and work with children and young people to help them stop vaping if they have taken it up, we do actually have a separate schools programme, which we work with, where we have a schools worker who goes in to try and keep children from originally taking up smoking, but now most of the work of that programme is focused on vapes. That is separate to the Integrated Lifestyle Service. Derek alluded to the National Swap to Stop Programme, where DHS says the national government will pay for some vapes for people to use who are current smokers. And the NHS are actually quite big users of that service, but the county council, public health team, are the ones who have the authority and the budget to devolve that. And I think that is one of the elements that will be combined into a public health grant going forward. So yeah, all those elements are in place. But I would say that, you know, if the council was looking to, you know, refocus its spend, certainly a consideration of children and young people's use of vaping would be something that we—worth looking at.
Thank you, thank you. councillor Cook.
Thank you, chairman. I think it's a really useful discussion and debate so far. I do have four questions, but I will do the statutory two to start. So obviously, given the ILS's sort of strong outcome profile, nationally high cost effectiveness rating, how does the service feature in our long-term sort of demand management modelling for adult social care?
I think the area that we've done some analysis on is around smoking. It's around smokers being likely to need adult social care services 10 years earlier than non-smokers. The other bit, which I didn't pull out but is in the report, is we've actually added in new components to the Integrated Lifestyle Service over the past five years, one of which is around a falls avoidance programme. So with one of my other hats on, I'm a professor of public health at the university and I've done some research over the past five years with a professor from Nottingham around how do we help older adults who are at high risk of falls, either they've already had one or they're at a high risk of having a fall, avoid that fall or if they do fall, fall in a way that reduces their risk of injury. And we have a balance and stability programme that we added into with obviously executive support, I think it was about three years ago, two or three years ago, into the Integrated Lifestyle Service, that specifically targets older adults who are at high risk of a fall. And it's quite an intensive intervention, it takes several months to go through the whole programme. And it's a programme about building up strength, about improving balance and about learning how, if you are about to fall, how to fall in a way that's likely to reduce your risk of having an injury. And it's also aimed at helping that individual get back into a chair. Because, you know, if somebody falls and they're on the floor for a long time, often these individuals have got other conditions, they might be diabetic, they might have asthma. If they can't get to their medication, then that's when real health risks can occur, as well as obviously any fractures that might happen from the fall. So that is part of the current Integrated Lifestyle Service and we do have data on that, which I'm sure will be part of the paper that comes forwards to scrutiny in January.
If I can just come in on that. So falls are one of the most important routes that people come into the care system. And it is very often because of a fall that someone who has been managing okay at home, suffers an injury, goes into hospital. The NHS are fantastic at mending people, but nonetheless, someone who has had a fall, had to go to hospital and recovered is very often much less able to look after themselves. And so it's a very significant route for people to come into the care system. There is a lot that we can do and indeed, we have a service that we commission and that public health contributes to, that the NHS run, which is about picking people up when they have fallen. And that is a very, very effective means of reducing the number of people going to hospital. But again, as we've been saying before, if you can avoid the person having the fall in the first place, then that can have a very positive impact. So a fall service as part of the ILS, quite tricky, as Derek has said, to measure the impact of things that didn't happen. But if you can stop someone falling in the first place, then that is almost certainly going to both extend their life and save the public purse quite a substantial amount of money.
Just a couple of figures on that, because I'm not sure they're in the paper. I've had more than 500 people go through the Balance and Stability Programme to date and more than three-quarters improve their, what's called timed get-up-and-go scores, which is their ability to move and balance. So it's clearly translated from what was an academic clinical trial, we've translated it into practice.
Thank you. We've got your second question.
Thank you, chairman. I think firstly, just, I'm sure I'll speak on behalf of all of us here to say thank you for all of your help and advice over the many years I've known you, Derek. And I do wish you all the best in Norfolk, it is a beautiful county. Not quite as nice as Lincolnshire, but it's still a wonderful county. There's been a lot of discussion about smoking and I think, given that the 1.14 million pound smoke-free generation grant is contingent upon maintaining current smoking cessation investment, what could be, I suppose, or have we done any assessment in terms of what the quantified financial or health inequality risks are for the council if we reduce or reconfigure the ILS offer as part of that forthcoming review?
I guess it depends very much on what that reconfiguration would look like and that would be, picking up councillor Lee's point, part of the impact assessment that we would have to look at. It's really important, and again, it's in the paper, that the commissioning of the Integrated Lifestyle Service purposefully targets those people from the most deprived communities. Andy's already mentioned, for example, in terms of the weight management programme, the Integrated Lifestyle Service, One U Lincolnshire will pay for people who can't afford to pay for Weight Watchers or Slimmers World. And about four out of 10 participants in the Integrated Lifestyle Service come from our most deprived population, or the most deprived population. So it is built into the contract to actively target people from our most deprived communities. One of the things we have done some work on is that generally, those four out of 10 come from our second and third most deprived quintiles. Targeting the people who are really, really have the lowest income is a lot more difficult. And if we did want to, if the executive chose to look at that group, we would have to pay more per unit. more per unit, because it actually takes a lot more work and a lot more intervention. But then the flip side of that would be, the cost benefit analysis is much higher in that community as well. So I guess it's an economic argument, a fiscal responsibility argument, helping that part of the population to change their behaviour.
Thank you, thank you councillor. councillor Cleaver.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, could I record my thanks for the invitation for health scrutiny colleagues to join you today, and also echo what councillor Cook said in praise of Professor Ward, thank you. Happy to echo those sentiments and wish you all the best in Norfolk. I think it goes without saying, I think everyone knows that health education and prevention of ill health is a very, very major issue. And of course, it's one of the pillars of the three pillars of the new health strategy nationally. And therefore, it is incredibly important that we do it thoroughly and we get it right and we do it well. There's clearly a tension, not necessarily a tension, there's clearly a distinction between persuading people who don't want to change lifestyle to do so versus helping those that do want to change. So my first question really is, how do we know we've got, we're putting the right balance of resources into each of those things? What does research tell us, particularly nationally, physically and locally, but also nationally? That's my first question. When it then comes to the interventions that we do make, because there is, it's such an important point, we need to know why people fail on these routes, as they do. People will give up, people will be offered the intervention, they won't see it through. That's human nature. So are we doing enough research to pick up why that's happening and come up with strategies to overcome it? And a final question, which I would ask about any scrutiny paper, I'm not seeing many comparisons with our statistical neighbours here. You know, has Norfolk or North Yorkshire or Devon geographically similar to us? Have they been through a similar exercise to this? Have they been through some research as to the effectiveness of their system and published it? And do we know how we compare with those? Thank you.
Thank you very much. In terms of the first point about people who maybe don't want to change as compared to people who do want to change, there is a strong academic literature out there. As an academic, I'll always say more research is needed. So if we can get some funding into Lincolnshire, I'm very happy with that, or anywhere in terms of improving the evidence base, that would be great. But the evidence base as it says, we can, one can, systems can, try to help people who don't want to change to change, but it's really, really expensive and really, really difficult. So what the Integrated Lifestyle Service does is it supports those people who already have made a decision to change, have taken responsibility for their own health and their own behaviours and want to change. That is the core target. But of course, that is not the same everywhere, and it comes back to councillor Cook's question about health inequalities. We know about 14% of adults smoke in Lincolnshire, so there's a big population. The vast majority of smokers, more than nine out of 10, want to quit. So we've got a big target population there, and helping those individuals quit, often it'll take two or three goes. With a structured approach, which is what the Integrated Lifestyle adopts, it'll take two or three attempts often. If people don't have support, it can take seven to 10 if they indeed ever do quit. So there's quite a big difference there. It's also important to recognise that there's a difference between socio-economic groups. So probably about a quarter of our most deprived population smoke as compared to less than 10% are most affluent. And it's important to recognise, especially as councillors, that there's a big geographical difference. So smoking rates in South Holland are more than 25% compared to parts of Lincoln, again, below 10%. So there's a really big differential and we need to target that. So that's the first question. Second question around more research and evidence, yes, absolutely, so I'll get that there. Third question was around comparisons, and we do have all of that data, all of that analysis, that will be fed into the paper going to the executive about the decision. Happy to share that, most of that's already, well, all of that's already in the public domain. So there's something called fingertips, which is a data source that we use that compares Lincolnshire across a whole range of different indicators to our statistical neighbours. I've brought analysis of that previously to scrutiny. It's in Director of Public Health annual reports, which are all on the website. So happy to share links to all of that data. But it will be part of the pack that comes in January as well, because obviously, it needs to be there to inform the executive when they make a decision about what they want to do.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you councillor Cleaver. You sneaked that one in there, didn't you, the third question? councillor Woolley.
Thank you, Chair. Right, it's around the finances and just want some reassurance. On page 17, first of all, there's mention of a contribution from the NHS ICB of half million pounds. One would hope that is ongoing. However, with all the uncertainty around the clustering arrangements, if that half million pounds was taken out, would the council still be able to afford the amount, including the £500,000? Particularly because of this 1.4 million being, 1.4, sorry, thank you, being contingent from DH on our amount being put in in the first place. So, you know, it just feels a bit like a domino situation, that if one were to pull out, or there would be some ambiguity, how well is the back covered to make sure that we can continue the service and still get the DH money, is my first question.
So the answer to that is, the integrated care board are committed for this financial year, absolutely. They are also committed to carry on if the proposal is to continue with an integrated lifestyle service, but obviously, that's contingent upon decision of the executive. So the £500,000 from the ICB is there for this year, same argument going for, and is there for next year as we continue, same amount for 26, 27, because we've extended the contract through to September, October, sorry, October. So there's no change to the ICB funding, is the short answer at this stage. They are waiting to hear what the executive decision is around the future of the Lifestyle Service. In terms of the, if they took that out, could we flex? Yes, we can flex, because we commission for outcomes based on the amount of money that's available. So we could reduce the overall package and still deliver the service. The 1.14 million from Smoke Free Generation is contingent on the number of people going through the smoke-free component. So if we lost the half a million, we could maintain the spend around the smoking bit and reduce other parts of the package to make sure we maintain that 1.14 million. If we reduced or stopped the stop smoking component, then we would lose the 1.4. My expectation is, and clear guidance from the Department of Health, is we would lose that 1.14 additional that we get into Lincolnshire. Does that, is that clearly enough?
Yes, it is, thank you very much. I suppose my only query would be, with the delay in renewing the contract, has that, did that affect or put in jeopardy, again, the NHS side of things, that they're willing to hang on? But that wasn't my second question, so I'll catch you out of here for that. The second question is, with the various measures, and yeah, it's great if you stop people smoking, or you stop them drinking, or whatever, or not so much, but in six months' time, or 12 months' time, we don't seem to have a mechanism for going back to those same people and checking up on them, like the 91-day thing, isn't it, for people going into hospital? So is there any way that we can, because that really would be a measure of success, wouldn't it, knowing that 12 months later, somebody was still smoke-free?
Yep, I'll answer this from a sort of national perspective, I don't know whether Andy wants to come in on the specifics, but generally, what happens, the measures we would use is overall smoking prevalence. And the reason for that is that to follow people up after 12 months actually costs quite a lot of money to get people to respond, because they've quit, and they don't want to respond, because they've been supported to quit. Or they've not quit, because they've started again and they won't tell you. So actually, to follow people up, and I've done some of this academically myself, it's really expensive to get people to answer the question, because either they think, I've quit, stop bugging me, or they think, I've started again, I'm not going to tell them. So you have to actually do a longitudinal study where you go and knock on the door and you then have to CO, measure them as well, to make sure they're telling you the truth, which is very, very expensive. So generally, from a value for the Lincolnshire taxpayer perspective, it doesn't make sense. What we have seen is a significant reduction in our smoking rates over the past 15 years. And we've started to see a slight reduction in our smoking at time of pregnancy, sorry, time of delivery rate as well, which has been a really stubborn indicator. So it's a fair challenge, but actually, in terms of bang for the book, it's more useful to help people set a quit date to quit and to be quit four weeks later than it is to try and follow up 12 months later. Andy, did you want to add anything?
Thank you. Not a lot to add, to be honest. That is the situation. Yeah, longitudinal, long-term follow-up is tricky. You basically need to do a research programme. So when we did the evaluation with the University of Lincoln, they did try and look at that, but again, it is hard to follow up. So nationally, this comes down to contract and performance, design and performance management, essentially. So when we set the service specification, you use the national benchmarks for what a good looks like in each individual pathway. And then we challenge the provider to, through the service specification, to deliver the right amount of outcomes there. And essentially, and this sort of links back to a previous question that was asked, actually, then the art is making sure, because we commission for outcomes, essentially, we have service credits built into contract, and we say to the provider, you know, we will end up taking money off you unless you deliver the right amount of outcomes. Now, obviously, that's a decision that we'll make in Covid, we were not going to take money off our provider for struggling to see people face to face. But the point being is that it is up to the provider to then deliver that performance against the outcomes that we've set. And in order to do that effectively, it's not realistic to sort of have a 12 to 24-month timeframe for understanding the successful performance over a five-year contract, because it would take you two or three years to actually understand whether things were working or not. So we end up having to use shorter-term measures. But absolutely right in terms of, you know, understanding the long-term impact of these services, we are very much in the academic research space, and more research is always required.
Thank you, thank you councillor. councillor Lichfield.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Actually, I thought my question had been answered, but now I'm not so sure. So if I repeat a question, apologies for that. So my question really relates to how proactive this service is and how focused it is on preventative measures. You mentioned Slimming World and schemes like that, but to me, they are reactive, they address a problem that's already been identified. Whereas there are other initiatives out there which sort of introduce a lifestyle change before perhaps it's recognised. So, and I'm not trying to plug a concept here, but there is a free concept called Park Run, which runs every Saturday, it's free, there's a number of them across Lincolnshire, and literally, you need a pair of shoes to run in them. So, you know, you talk about deprived areas and costs and those sort of things, you know, that's about as minimal cost as you could consider. So I guess the point is, how proactive are is the scheme in terms of introducing concepts like that as a way to introduce a lifestyle, which then doesn't lead hopefully to obesity, introduces you to a group of people who, you know, are relatively healthy and sort of just introduce that into a person's life, really?
I'll start then, Andy coming in on the specifics to the ILS, absolutely right. I would be a very happy man if I got made redundant because there was no work for me to do. So the more that we can do to keep people fit and healthy and not need any support to change their behaviours, I absolutely agree with you. What we know from things like Park Run is massively beneficial, they really help people engage with physical activity in that wider community, as you've just articulated. The Integrated Lifestyle Service is sort of one step further down where people already have an existing challenge, it might be smoking, it might be weight, it might be lack of physical activity, and need a way to get back into that. There are lots of free resources out there. Couch to 5K, for example, is a really good podcast that we would support. As a public health division and as a council, we target the whole population, and we do quite a lot of comms, as we discussed with councillor Cleaver, around all of that wider population stuff. Then we've got things like the Integrated Lifestyle Service that supports people who want to make a change but already have some challenges. And then we have more specialist services, like we've already talked about substance misuse, where people have quite significant challenges. So we do the whole thing, and I'm going to challenge Andy to answer this and not mention the Rose hypothesis.
Thanks, Derek. Yeah, you've thrown me under the bus there. The Rose hypothesis is this idea in public health that actually, numbers matter, and targeting the whole population and helping everybody, or a lot of people, a tiny amount, actually does more good when you add up everything in the population than focusing on the high-risk people at one end and spending loads of money on them. So the old analogy used is seat belts, essentially. If you're never going to crash a car, wearing a seatbelt doesn't make any difference to you. But you institute a law to making everybody in the country wear a seatbelt, and you save loads and loads of lives. But the individual risk reduction to the individual may be minimal, they may never notice the difference. So in terms of physical activity, things like that, I love Park Run, Park Run is fantastic. I used to do it when my kids were little and I didn't have to ship them around on a Saturday morning, but those days are long gone. But there's people who won't go to Park Run. And this is the point, with physical activity and things like that, I always say, people, it's not that nothing works, it's that everything works a bit, and for some people. So the challenge is not thinking of good ideas, and Park Run is a brilliant idea. The challenge is working out what works at scale in the population that gives you the best bang for your buck for public pound. And actually, the problem with things like Park Run, it's not a problem, because it's just an absolute good in the population. But the challenge with using that as a sort of the example of what works well, is that there are some people who won't go to Park Run, it's not for them, they are intimidated. They don't want to turn up to see someone like me with my bright running shoes, trying to beat my personal best. They'll feel that they may be overweight, they've got dodgy hips and knees, they have poor mental health, the last thing they're going to do is go and stand in a park on a Saturday morning when they can't even get themselves out of bed. So that is where you do need to have a health improvement strategy. If you want to do the most good in the population and get the most bang for your buck, you need to make sure that the services that you're delivering can work with those people. And I've got one good example of how the Integrated Lifestyle Service has developed its approach in this. When we first started out, there was, we'd have contract management meetings, or our commercial colleagues would, and we'd discuss the Healthy Weight Programme and working in some of the more underprivileged areas. And we'd hear challenges, we'd hear the thing, it's difficult to get engaged with the GPs, we want loads of referrals from the GPs, GPs don't really know about the service. Now, early days, you know, GPs are now big referrers into the service, we're really pleased to say. And so we kind of, we would challenge back, and we would say, right, well, you know, we want to see more of this. And we have a lovely example where some enterprising, you know, following that challenge from us as commissioners, the provider went into the Berkshire GP practice and just chatted with the practice manager and said, look, we've got this obesity, this healthy weight offer, you've got really high rates of obesity in this area, what can we do? And the practice manager said, well, we've got a mobile phone list, we can just text people. So if you want to say, we'll be here on Wednesday morning at 9am, and if you want a free sort of One New Lincolnshire weight loss programme, come along, just turn up. and we'll be here, we'll have a little desk, we'll have our... So they thought, okay, well, we'll try it and maybe get two or three people. I think they had over a hundred people. They were queuing out the door and down the block. No one expected there to be such an appetite in that very deprived community for something like that. And again, it's about understanding what that individual, sort of small subset of people will work well. And that's where actually commissioning a provider who can be flexible, who can build that local knowledge and work with the local professionals is, I think, what's going to work well. And we've seen some, I mean, there's always improvement and absolutely value, you know, the challenge from scrutiny and from exec to say, we need more value for money here. And I think that's absolutely appropriate and should always be the case. And, you know, we pass that on to the provider and we try and see more outcomes.
Thank you, Andy.
Just a small example.
Thank you. Councillor Overton.
Thank you, Chair. And quite a lot of what I was going to ask has been asked. Apologies for being a few minutes late at the beginning. Just to say that the thing I wanted to pick up was the return is, you know, the point about the way in which the documents demonstrate the facts that show the value of the outcomes. And I think the, I just had a look at the university research, there were twenty-four individuals of the ten thousand interviewed, which is, you know, quite a small proportion. But clearly, if you're doing a qualitative study, you know, they've done it and they've done it well. They've come out with a really positive conclusion as to the impact without necessarily, and doing some follow-ups, as was mentioned. But I do think, I'd like to see something more on this, and I think we've talked about comparing with different areas that don't have a one-use system or somehow looking at that. And I can, with a fingertips sort of study that was mentioned. But I think, bearing in mind that our councils are going to be dissolved and new ones started, we think, if it happens, then obviously we'll need some really good basis for new contracts. So it'll be really important. So anything more that can be done on that would be great. Thank you.
Lovely. Thank you very much. I'm going to go around again now, so keep the questions on point if you can and if you can keep the answers on point as well because we are running short of time. Thank you. Councillor Lee.
I'm really sorry, I've got five areas I'm going to ask about. Before I start though, I wanted to say, Derek, because I'd forgotten you were leaving, just, you will be so missed. I was at the hospital right through Covid and while we also, we saw the results of the Covid inquiry a couple of weeks ago, we thought there was chaos in government, but you were like the sane, reasonable, steady voice for those of us that were nursing the people. So thank you for that. Seriously, thank you. We appreciated it. Right, my second question is around redirection of LCC budgets. At the top of page twenty-one, I'm sorry, I'll try and be as quick as I can, says it's acknowledged the scope for the service to be redesigned, focus on disadvantaged groups who may struggle to access other self-help services, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh. It's acknowledged that the services are not statutory. And then it says there are opportunities to spend the ring-fenced public health grant in other priority areas for the council. That doesn't say to me that they're going to focus on different people, they're going to focus on different budgets with any changes. So my first question is, can you please confirm that there's no public health grant underspend and any change of focus would actually equate to cuts in services? And then the second question is, if that is correct, if there is no underspend, can someone please explain the rationale for ring-fenced public health grant being targeted for redistribution against other overspending budgets? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Can you keep it on point?
I'll start with that. So there is a small underspend in the public health grant. Issues that will be considered in the paper that's being written are whether the public health grant is being spent in the areas relevant to public health that are the best effect for the council. So the public health grant has to be spent on things which are relevant to public health. One of the issues that we'll be looking at in the report are, considering the breadth of responsibilities that the county council has, are we using the public health grant in the most effective and appropriate manner in ways that are fully consistent with the grant conditions?
Everyone else got three, it's a quick one. So that doesn't mean that you're going to cut public health and spend it for argument's sake on highways.
The rules from the Department of Health and Social Care in terms of what the public health grant can be spent on are very clear. The Director of Public Health and the Section 151 officer have to sign at the end of each year to say that the grant has exclusively been spent on things which are within the remit of public health.
Thanks, it was just the other priority areas that the redistribution...
Thank you, councillor. Is that all your questions answered and asked? Well, I may want to councillor Cook. Councillor Lee, you have the floor. Couple more questions.
Have I got the floor? Right, the third one focuses on children and elderly people. Within the ILS, there's a falls prevention programme as well as a programme to help overweight and obese children in families. Both of those are above-average problems in Lincolnshire, and both the need and demand for falls prevention massively outstrips the demand, the supply. Can I have clarification where preventative support for children and older people sits in terms of council priorities?
Thank you, councillor Lee. And can we have the answer, if possible, short?
Well, I think both of those areas are part of the health and wellbeing strategy and the integrated care strategy, so they're both priorities in that sense. In terms of compared to other priorities, I think that is a discussion for the executive.
Councillor Lee.
I've looked at the papers and as far as I can see, what we've got is an interim report on the Lincolnshire ILS. And it's July 2021, so it's four years old. And it's actually an assessment of the service rather than an assessment of what might happen if we don't have it. But we've not got that, so. So we don't have impact assessments to examine what the loss might mean. And I wondered, first of all, if Martin would clarify in his professional opinion what the impact of redirecting budgets might be and potential cost cutting on adult social care services. I'm thinking people will get ill younger, so they're going to need more social care, that sort of thing.
So there isn't with this report an impact assessment of what would happen if the service were to be removed because this report is about the current service. There will be an impact assessment with the report that will be considered by scrutiny on the 28th of January and by the executive on the 6th of February, and that will include a, to the best effect that we can, what the impact on adult social care and other services would be of the options that will be considered there. So I can't at this stage, because we haven't developed those options, at this stage I can't give you a sort of response in terms of what the impact of those would be. But I can be clear that the report that will come in six weeks' time or so will have a full impact assessment of all options that are considered in that report.
Thank you.
That's really reassuring, thank you, honestly.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Is this your last one? Can you make sure it's short, please?
Look, this is scrutiny. It's robust.
I know what you're saying.
I'm sorry, it's my democratic right as an elected member to scrutinise.
I know, you've had a lot, but this is your last one.
Right. Will the Director for Public Health advise committee what is the best way in his professional opinion to prevent illness and therefore prevent demand on services? I was a cardiac nurse for twenty-five years, this is my second bit. I'm mindful of the impact smoking has on cardiac health. As soon as people have an MI, straight on them, will you give up smoking? And like Andy says, everything works a bit. It's dietary changes, exercise and stopping smoking. So if this was to be cut, the smoking cessation service, can the Director of Public Health confirm that if it was cut, then Lincolnshire would be the only local authority in England with no smoking cessation service?
So I think there are two different things there. The first one, in terms of my professional advice, as I've said before, smoking is the single worst thing people can do for themselves legally, so everything we can do to help people quit smoking is going to have a massive benefit to the public health, and you've already mentioned, along with things like weight loss and increasing physical activity. It's a package, but if you're a smoker, it's the worst thing you can do for yourself. Secondly, my understanding, I don't know every local authority in the country, but my understanding is that every upper-tier authority, so public health, council that has public health responsibilities has a stop smoking service in place at the moment.
Thank you, councillors. Thank you, officers as well, and Dave and Andy. I've just got one quick question. I don't want to drag it out any further. It's regarding, I think it's councillor Woolley mentioned about the chasing up in twelve months, and you said it's cost too much. Could you not just send out an email or text, not wanting a response, but just saying, congratulations, you've reached your twelve months since doing this, we hope you're doing well, and if you are still struggling, please get in touch with us? Something as simple as that, because it might either, you know, they go, we're happy about that, or they might go, it might guilt them into going, maybe I'll give it another go. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, we could build that in, that would need to be part of, obviously, a future commission inspect, but wouldn't be a problem in the slightest, yeah.
Thank you very much. I think we've given that a good go-round and everybody's had their chance to speak. So thank you for your questions and comments. This concludes the discussion on this item. Suggested proposal will be, the information presented be noted, and officers be thanked for their presentation and comments be passed on to the exec. Does anybody dissent?
I'd like to abstain, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Let the record reflect that councillor Lee has dissented, number one. Thank you very much. We will now have a short pause to allow members of the Health Scrutiny Committee to leave. Should you wish, you're more than welcome to stay. Please note, I've lost it. I'm going to have to put my glasses on. What, you may stay if you want to observe for the rest of the meeting. If not, thank you very much for attending. Just to let everybody know, we're going to have a fifteen-minute break now because I think everybody might need one. We won't have it after agenda item six now, we'll have it now. Thank you.
...
Thank you. Agenda Item Six, Adult Social Care Strategy. This pre-decision scrutiny report can be found on pages 23 to 76 of the Agenda Pack. The report seeks approval from the Adult Social Care Strategy, 25 to 28. The decision is due to be considered by the exec on the 13th of January 2026. The views of the scrutiny committee will be reported to the executive as part of its consideration of this item. The report will be presented by Martin Samuels, Director of Adult Social Care and Community Wellbeing. Would you like to present your report, and as short as you can, if possible, please?
Thank you, Chair. You've actually said some of the things that I was going to say, so that'll make it a bit briefer. So, members of the committee will be aware, we brought an earlier draft of the strategy to this committee on the 23rd of July. There was an extensive and really helpful debate at that time, lots of comments made, which we then incorporated into a revised version of the document. That was then considered by the executive on the 3rd of November. I think the executive were very supportive of the direction of travel, that we were trying to go in with the strategy, but made the point that really the document had become rather too long and rather inaccessible. A 50-page strategy, you need to be quite eager to want to sit down and read that kind of, that kind of document. And in addition, comments made by the executive about the changes happening in the NHS with the Integrated Care Board, that that's now moved from being a Lincolnshire ICB to being a Derbyshire, Lincolnshire, Nottinghamshire cluster, with effectively entirely new leadership, that it would be appropriate to engage further with the cluster leadership, just to get their view on this. So, what we have, the aim of the document remains as it was before, to give us a clear focus on enabling Lincolnshire people to maintain their independence, to thereby reduce the need for adult social care, and through that, to enable us to have sustainable finances for the council. That strategy is guided by the target operating model, which is described in that, in the strategy, which aims to shift our focus from being a reactive delivery of care service to being as much as possible a preventative, early intervention to avoid the need for care arising in the first place. So that principle remains. But what we've done is, we have taken a very hard look at the text of the document, revised it and reduced it in order to make it clearer, and more likely that someone will actually pick it up and read it. So the latest draft is now about half the length of what went to the executives, about 30 pages. I should say that we are, there are further revisions that we would like to do. We would also be putting it through into a more public design, so you have a Word document at the moment, it'll be properly designed. But there is still, within that process, plenty of opportunity for comments from this committee to be taken on board. And then, as Jay, you've said, it will go to the executive on the 13th of January. There'll be the opportunity for this committee to provide comments to the meeting of the executive. And I should say that we will also, in the process, be taking on board any comments that we receive from the ICB. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin, for that. I would like to invite members now of this committee to make relevant statements or ask questions. Do we have any questions? Councillor Eve?
It is always a clinical decision, so that ultimately, people should only ever be in hospital when they need hospital care. And indeed, there's a great deal of evidence to say that staying in hospital longer than you need to is, in fact, really bad for you. So, the term we tend to use in the social care world is decompensating, not a particularly pretty term, but it is essentially, the evidence is, if you are an older person and you stay in hospital for a week longer than you need to for medical purposes, that will probably mean that when you get home, your ability to look after yourself is reduced by about a year. So it is really bad for people to be in hospital if they don't need to. So the NHS has rigorous processes to ensure that people don't stay longer than they need to, and then, in adult social care, we will do everything we can where people have an ongoing care need, to ensure that those needs are addressed on a timely basis. And it's worth saying that we are, we do really well in Lincolnshire in terms of, very, very few people have to wait more than a few days for care packages to be arranged. So it is very rare for people to have a long delay in hospital because of the social care system. In terms of eviction notices, I don't have data on the number in Lincolnshire, but I think they are very few indeed.
Thank you, Councillor Eve.
Can I just come back on that?
Yes, you can.
Do you have any idea as to why it gets to a situation where eviction notices are given to people who are in hospital? Because everything, as you say, should be falling into place for them to get out as soon as possible, it's something I'd never heard of before.
So, I'm not aware of the particular case that you're talking about, so I, and I wouldn't be able to comment on a specific case, but I can only speak in general terms. So there could be a situation where someone has been assessed as needing residential care, and we have identified a care home that would meet their needs, and would meet their needs at a cost that the council is prepared to pay. And the individual or their family may say, well, actually, I'd like to go to a different care home, which would cost more than the council would be prepared to pay. But the individual or the family aren't prepared to pay the top-up that would be required. So that, and therefore, the family might, the individual might say, well, I'm not leaving hospital until I get that care home, even though there is an entirely suitable care home available. So, I mean, there are a number of different situations, but as I say, it's quite rare for that to happen.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Martin. Councillor Bean?
Thank you, Chair. You talk about a targeted operating model, or TOM, in this. How in practice is that actually going to improve the coordination amongst services across our county?
So, a couple of answers to that. In part, I'm going to note to the next item on the agenda, which is about the target operating model and our restructure, which Hayley will be presenting. So I won't ask Hayley to comment now, but she will, she will talk later on. The main issue is, and we've seen it already, that we've been talking to the staff across the directorate, setting out the target operating model, getting that way of thinking about prevention and early support and early action, and we can see how it's getting staff thinking in a different way. So that rather than seeing themselves, I suppose, I suppose the parallel that I would draw is what we've seen with home-to-school transport, so a very different area. So, in a previous authority, I had responsibility, I was also the director of Children's Services, and I had responsibility for the home-to-school transport service. And what I found that I had was this service that saw its role as booking buses and taxis for children and young people to get to school. What we then did was say, that's not your purpose, your purpose is to ensure that children and young people are able to get to school safely. And that change in focus was fundamental, because what became clear was that, as a council, we did no travel training. Because the service simply saw their role as, child A needs to get to school, we'll book them a taxi or a bus. There hadn't been any work to say, how could we work with the child or young person and with their family, to enable the child to be able to do the travel, to do the journey themselves, to enable the family to do that journey without the need for, you're okay, councillor Woolley, without the need for the state to step in. We are effectively going through that same process with the adult social care teams, so that instead of seeing themselves as their job being to assess people in order to give them adult social care, they see their role as being, how can I enable this person to stay as independent as they possibly can? And ideally, not need any adult social care at all. And part of the focus on that is partly, there is plenty of evidence that the sooner
But if a care package has been offered and it's in place, or if it's been offered and declined and they've got capacity, they have to go because hospitals are not hotels. And anybody who's refusing to leave is denying a bed to someone who needs it. And when we all look at those queues in A and E, they're waiting for a bed further down the line. So I totally endorse what you say about it's absolutely rare. If not, I, I never saw it once. Not once, I promise.
Thank you councillor, and I can agree with you. When I've been in hospital, I wanted to get out as well. councillor Cook?
Thank you Chairman. So the strategy obviously rightly emphasises prevention, early action and strengths-based practice. I guess how will we ensure this cultural shift is consistently implemented across teams? Especially given the CQC's previous findings around variability in practice and decision-making?
So again, I think I'm going to refer you to the, to the report that's, that's coming up. So two things, though, we will have an ongoing engagement with staff to, to emphasise that, you know, prevention is better than cure and, and it links very well with the, the neighbourhood health and wellbeing service that the government is focusing on in terms of changing the way that community health and social care are developed. And I, and I should note, I deliberately talk about a neighbourhood health and wellbeing service rather than the neighbourhood health service that the NHS has been talking about. Indeed, we had the, the Minister of Care was at a conference that I was at last week and he was very clear that we should be talking about a neighbourhood health and wellbeing service. And that, that whole philosophy will be and is central to everything that we're saying and sharing with staff. The issue of variability, that's where we have performance management. That's a key part of, of my role to focus across the, the directorate and particularly with, with Hayley. And again, I won't, I won't get her to, to, to speak now. But the, the, these issues in terms of how we address that in staff, picked up in the next report.
If I can do my second strategy question. Given the, so given the, the three ICB cluster arrangement, I guess what governance mechanisms are there to make sure that Lincolnshire's priorities are being given sufficient influence? And obviously, you know, I like the fact that we've got much shorter, more accessible public-facing language, which has been adopted, which is great. And I guess how will that strategy translate into measurable performance indicators that allow us as scrutiny to track whether or not that transformation is taking place?
So in terms of, so you're absolutely right, there's been a, a significant change with, with the NHS and the ICB clusters. Worth noting that legally, the three ICBs still exist. They just have the same management team and the same non-executives on them. But they, they do legally still exist as separate bodies. The expectation is they'll merge in a couple of years' time. In terms of getting, ensuring there is a clear Lincolnshire voice. So Claire Raybold, who was the interim chief exec of the Lincolnshire ICB, is now the Director of Strategy and Customer Engagement for the cluster. So there is a Lincolnshire person at the, at the top of that organisation. And amongst the non-executives, a couple of the cluster non-executives were Lincolnshire non-executives. So, so there's a, there are Lincolnshire people in the, in the heart of the ICB. The key route however, is the Lincolnshire Health and Wellbeing Board continues. So where, while the government is proposing to abolish integrated care partnerships, which were at ICB level, Lincolnshire was just like the only place in the country where the ICP and the Health and Wellbeing Board had the same footprint. The Health and Wellbeing Board will continue and that is at upper-tier council authority footprint. So there is absolutely a Lincolnshire, a Lincolnshire approach. In terms then of performance indicators, you'll be aware that we are currently developing a new council plan, which will come to the executive and for council in due course. As part of that, we are looking at a range of performance indicators for the adult social care and public health side of, of things. Indeed councillor Craig and I have a, have a meeting, I want to say Friday, anyway, in the next few days to, 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 to look at this. So as part of the council plan, there will be a, a suite of indicators that will allow scrutiny to hold the services to account.
Thank you councillor Cook. Yes Derek, is it short?
It's very short. Just to add that the MHCLG have now got a local government outcomes framework draft out, which, which has a whole section around adult social care independence. And every council will be held to account for the specifics there. And we're feeding that into the, the council plan, certainly from a public health perspective, but I'm sure also from an adult social care perspective. So there'll be that opportunity to compare.
Thank you Derek, thank you Martin, thank you councillor Cook and we have councillor Woolley.
Thank you Chairman. I want to refer to the proportion of adults who receive direct payments. In this paper, what we are doing well is that, or the figure's printed here, 43% of all of those who need support have it through a direct payment. In a later payment, blah, 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 teeth in, in a later paper, we will be discussing performance and it looks for quarter two as though not only are we down on, I think 39%, but actually that the target is only 42%. And I'm just trying to understand why it appears that we are try, we, we, we're pointing in the wrong direction and that if we were able to, in this, this previous set of figures, we should be aspiring to beat that as it were and it appears that we're not.
So I think direct payments is a really good example where targets need to be in a range rather than simply more is better. So Lincolnshire has one of the highest proportions in the country of people who draw on care and support receiving a direct payment. So I think the national average is about 25%, we're at, as you say, 39, 40%. So we are very significantly higher than the, than the average. There is a lot of evidence that having a direct payment can be really beneficial in terms of outcomes and it can be very cost-effective that, that on average, a person who is receiving a direct payment will secure better, better outcomes at a, at a lower unit cost than a person receiving a, a directly managed service. So there has been a very significant focus over a number of years in Lincolnshire to, to, to increase the number. I think what has become clear is that we have sometimes, as a service, been hitting the target and missing the point. So looking at this now, we are finding quite a few people where actually, although they're receiving a direct payment, they are not themselves managing that payment or having much influence over it. So we have quite a few people who don't have capacity, who have a direct payment, but we are then paying a third-party organisation to manage that payment for them. And that is causing us to, to ask, is the individual benefiting from that? We also have quite a few people who are receiving a direct payment, who are then buying the service from the same providers that we have contracts with and are sometimes paying more for that service than if we were providing that service through our, through our contract. And also, we've been finding some instances where the, the process of us making the payment and making sure that the payment is correct and it's being spent on the appropriate things has, has, has come a bit awry and people are leading, are ending up with, with quite large amounts of, of credit in their, in their direct payment accounts, which we then need to, 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 to pull back. So we are having quite a campaign, again, this is one of the things I've asked, I've asked Hayley to, to look at, of going through all of the people who are receiving a direct payment and making sure that they are actually benefiting from having a direct payment. And what we think that is likely to do is that that will pull back the proportion who are having a direct payment, but it'll pull it back to the ones who are genuinely benefiting from it rather than people who actually may be finding that either it's a, it's a bit of a burden to them, that they wouldn't, that, you know, they don't really want that or they're not going to benefit from it, or that it's actually costing the council money. So we'll, we'll, we're trying to get it in a, a more appropriate range. So there's no change, absolutely no change in the philosophy that direct payments in the right circumstances are fantastic for people, but it does need to be in the right circumstances, rather than simply direct payment, good, managed service, bad.
If I could very quickly come back, Chair. You've effectively said there's a spring clean going on. When will it be completed? When will you have gone through all of the, those payments? Thank you, really good question. So we've got, we're doing it in phases. So this is usually when the person has their annual review. So when a social worker goes out to review their needs on an annual basis, they are reviewing those on a regular occurrence. However, we've done a large proportion where we've had to, aim, from the audit process, claw back large amounts, sums of money from, from people. And in those circumstances, we're doing earlier reviews. So it's going to take on average between six and 12 months, depending when the person's annual review is scheduled for.
Thank you councillor, thank you Hayley. councillor Cullen?
Thank you very much Chair. I would just like to express my thanks to Martin and his team for making the report so much more concise and streamlined and, you know, losing a lot of the technical jargon and making it a lot easier to read. So thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Cullen. Thank you for your questions and comments. I am assuming there's no more questions, we'll move on. No, lovely, thank you very much. This now concludes the discussion on this item. I move that the committee support the recommendations to the executive as detailed on page 23 of the report, namely that they approve the proposed adult social care strategy and I move that a summary of our comments be shared with the executive for their consideration. Do I have a second there? councillor Cullen, thank you. Could I have a show of hands in favour please? I think that's unanimous, thank you very much. Agenda item seven, Adult Social Care Targeted Operation Model, TOM, and Staff Realignment Update. This report can be found on page 77 to 86 of the Agenda Pack and will allow the committee to understand and scrutinise the operational delivery of the services within adult care. The report will be presented by Hayley Eccles, Deputy Director of Adult Social Care. Thank you very much. Hayley?
Thank you Chair. Thank you everybody. So I am going to summarise the report because I know that an outline of the Target Operating Model has been to scrutiny before where it's been agreed. So this is an update on progress so far. So just to provide a, a quick summary. So the Target Operating Model provides a framework for delivery of our care act duties. And we do this through early intervention, technology-enabled support and integrated working with our partners and stakeholders. So the Target Operating Model is there to maximise independence, to strengthen resilience and keeping people in their own homes and communities for as long as possible, providing the right care at the right place at the right time to enable them to sustain that independence and reduce any, aim, reduce any, aim, dependencies on, on our adult social care services as Martin's talked about. So in terms of where we are so far, the operational teams have been moved into the area-based teams now and they're aligning to the communities. The new leadership structure is now in place. And so moving from the executive director and DAS and, and three ADs and a director of public health to the DAS two ADs and one director of public health. So we've really streamlined the, the leadership team and looking at those strategic responsibilities of each of the ADs to make sure we can deliver effectively on the elements of the Target Operating Model, but also the Adult Social Care Improvement Plan as well. The amalgamation of the learning disability team into the three area teams has now taken place and we're seeing really good outcomes for people in terms of service delivery, waiting times and staff morale. So that's working really, really well. And each of the heads of service are now taking a strategic role in the leadership of, of different areas where either we're improving services or there's an element in there around the improvement plan as well. So the next steps are the pre-front door and early front door. So this is getting to people earlier, preventing them from getting worse and needing adult social care services. And thinking about how we introduce digital and signposting so we can meet people's needs closer to their own communities as well. And we're using Tag, the Target Operating Model to deliver the outcomes for the Adult Social Care Improvement Plan. And a core focus on the Target Operating Model is to enable people to step into adult social care at the right time, so not earlier. And when people do come into adult social care, when their needs are met and their outcomes are met, there's also an opportunity to step back down into least restrictive services. So we've had a tendency to draw people in and keep them there. And actually, people's lives don't stay the same. So if we're keeping them there, what are we achieving? So actually, this is about identifying outcomes, meeting those outcomes and enabling people to be as independent as possible and stepping back out of statutory services and least restrictive services to enable them to have more control and autonomy of their life. So there will be a further update on the report in terms of the pre-front door and front door elements. But all of the progress is on target, is linked into the adult improvement programme and we're seeing good outcomes for individuals' performance and the staff morale as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much Hayley for the report. I would now like to invite members to ask any questions or any relevant statements. councillor Cullen, do we have anybody wishing to speak? councillor Bean?
Thank you for your report Hayley. Can I just ask, what are we doing to develop a greater understanding of those people that are digitally excluded and what are we going to do to help them?
Thank you. That's a really good question and there's been lots of work that's been undertaken to understand this. And the most important piece of work we've done is speaking to people. So speaking to people, co-producing solutions. So where people aren't able to access digital or tech-enabled support for a variety of number of reasons, that could be that they don't have broadband. That could be that they're much older in age and it's difficult for them to learn new skills and to understand what those challenges are. And then link that into a really clear strategy of solution-focused ideas. And there isn't going to be one size that fits all. So there will always be some people who cannot access digital or are digitally excluded. So we need to be proportionate and meet the needs of all of our communities. And whilst we would like people to use technology as far as possible, there also needs to be a response for those that can because we still need to fulfil our statutory duties. So that's part of the work that we're exploring with, one, a strategy to develop that corporately and within adult social care, but also on an individual basis when a social worker goes out to do the assessment, looking at those different solutions to meet needs and also linking in with our occupational therapy team, for example, to look at different solutions to be able to, to meet that person's needs. So on a very strategic level, that's being addressed and looked at. And I don't think we're there with all of the solutions, but to feed into that people's voices and experiences on what works, what doesn't work and how can we co-produce the strategies together?
Thank you for your answer Hayley. I ask the question because my particular ward is a large rural ward and not only is there very poor internet out there, but certainly when I go out there, I never have a phone signal, so.
Thank you councillor Bean. Derek?
Just to add to what Hayley had said, you, you'll see on page 83 that the Target Operating Model, pre-front door stuff talks about understanding our community better. We've done a lot of work within the public health division with the university through the academic side of it to understand digital inclusion and digital exclusion. And it's actually on the, the website. We've got a Lincolnshire Digital Health Tool We've got a Lincolnshire Digital Health Toolkit that shows where the barriers to using digital kit are. Partly, absolutely, councillor Bean, it's about access to 3G, 4G, even 5G and wifi. But sometimes it's about kit, sometimes it's about being able to and understanding how to use the kit and sometimes the physical or mental health impediments. And it's all of that wrapped together. What it shows us, that academic work which we've published, is that, and it's an ongoing conversation with our NHS colleagues, generally it's down the coast in our rural communities that we really have challenges. And that's where a lot of people would see the solution being digital. So we can't just flip it. And we can't say, well, because you're out there, just use digital for all the reasons that you've explained plus others. So we are working that through and that's a core part of the neighbourhood health programme, which we're doing in an integrated way with the NHS.
Thank you for the answer. Thank you, councillor Bean. Did you want to come back with another one?
I'd just say I'd be happy if I got a one G out there.
Thank you. Councillor Cullen.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you, Hayley. The report is really detailed. Thank you very much for bringing it forward. One thing that it doesn't cover are the costs. So I would just like to ask, what do you think are the predicted costs? Do you predict any cost savings and what are the time scales? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your feedback. So there is no cost outside the financial envelope to develop the target operating model. We're restructuring and transforming ourselves to be more efficient and effective and outcome focused. So as with everything, we have to evolve based on demand and changes in the population and changes to, and challenges within adult social care. So not just thinking about meeting the population needs now, but how do we sustain that for future years as well? So with transformation and becoming more effective and efficient, we are predicting that we're seeing some, we will see some financial savings associated with that. And they're outlined in the Adult Social Care Improvement Programme. So we're tracking those savings and we do have a target. We monitor that on a monthly basis to have a look at what does that look like. And I want to be really clear that that's not about not meeting people's needs. So where there are efficiencies is because we're becoming more effective in the way that we're working and efficient use of our resources. It's not because we're not meeting people's needs because we have a statutory responsibility to do that.
Yeah, if I can just, just come in on, on that. So just building on what, what Hayley has said. So a couple of things. First, really, really important, always to be really clear. If people have a need for adult social care, the council has a statutory duty to ensure that need is met and we make sure that that need is met. So, so all of the, all of the work we're doing, all of the changes we're doing absolutely should never be under, never be perceived as not meeting people's eligible needs under the, under the care act. So we, but we are seeking to work with people so they either don't develop those needs or we can meet those needs in a more cost-effective manner. So just to put a little context, so the, the cost of adult social care goes up every year. The National Living Wage has just been announced for next year. Inflation, we're working on. And that tends to work out at about four, five, six per cent a year. So just simply to, to buy the amount of care from one year to the next increases by, by that amount. And then the population is growing. There are more people, more people who need care. And that tends to be by, you know, demand tends to go, grow by two or three per cent a year. So effectively, to, to stay still, adult social care spend is probably going to grow by six, seven, eight per cent a year. So what we're trying to do is realistically, we can't keep that flat, but you'll see the impact of the work we do. By instead of the, the cost going by seven or eight per cent a year, it might grow by five or six per cent a year. And given that the, 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 the general fund budget for adult social care is, is over £250 million, two or three per cent makes up, is a, is a lot of, is a lot of money. So we're very much trying to slow that rate of increase by ensuring that people's needs are met, but they are met in the, in, either they're, they're met in a more cost-effective way or that the need never arises. And just to give a, a sense of the, the, where the success we've had so far. So we've just had data come through for national comparisons for the spend in 24, 25. The, if you take adult social care across the whole country, the average spend per head of population, so that's the entire population in England, was £632 last year. In Lincolnshire, it was £465. So Lincolnshire spends 26% less per head of population than the, than the England average. So it's a sign of the success we've had so far. But there's more that we can do. So, but that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you so, so much, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Cullen. Councillor Lee.
I wanted to thank you, Hayley, for a really comprehensive report. It's really informative and I'm pleased to see the direction of travel as well. I'm someone who's comfortable with digital technology, well, fairly comfortable. But not everyone is and a lot of elderly people aren't. But it isn't just about elderly people. It's actually as well as, as you say, about people where you can't get a signal. And also actually about financial reasons as well. You know, not everybody can afford to have the internet connected, particularly if they've only got a pension and they're perhaps paying for social care to come in. So I, I was just thinking back actually, because the previous chair of this committee, I won't use the word obsessed, he was very focused on digital technology and things being online or AI. And I used to feel it just wasn't a tolerant attitude that recognised that different people have different needs and want to be looked after in different ways. And I think there is a place for technology and IT, for records and things like that. But I'm glad that you do appreciate, you know, that not everybody wants to go online for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Anything? No, lovely. And I'd just like to say I concur with councillor Lee on those digital things. I do love technology, but I do understand fully that a lot of the elderly population do struggle. Thank you. Councillor Overton.
Thank you. This is the right direction, but it's not new. And I'm wondering what is new here. I, I recognise it's new people with new determination, which I appreciate. But I'm wondering if there is a step change here. We have talked before about making, getting the voluntary sector to do more. We've talked about signposting, you know, into the voluntary sector. And which is, you know, it's all good stuff. But is there really going to be? How, how can I be convinced that this is really a step change? And then, secondly, the impact on unmet need. You said there's no impact on unmet need, I think. You know, that this is not going to increase the number of people who are unable to access the services, my point about unmet need. So just again, I, I think you said that. But is there anything that I can hang the hook on my head and say, well, it isn't going to because obviously such and such? And then thirdly, it's linked, it's all linked together, is that are we delaying it? I mean, I agree entirely with keeping people healthy for longer. But are we just delaying it? Is it a delayed cost so that in the end they're still all going to need that heavy care? But just a bit later and looked at from a population point of view, we haven't improved things. I don't know. So some thoughts to put together. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Overton. Martin, would it be you?
So I'll, I'll, I'll start with this. So is it transformational and completely new in terms of its thinking? Probably not. I think, I think that in, in many ways, adult social care has been trying to push in this direction nationally for, for quite a number of years. Will it be transformational for Lincolnshire? In many ways, yes, I think it will be. And I think that that is through the, the, the new team that I've, that I brought together, Hayley being obviously an important element of that, that there is a real sense of a different conversation, a different approach, a different buzz within the, within the directorate. And it does feel as though we are moving forward and making progress in a way that I haven't seen. I mean, I've, I've, I've been with this council now for a couple of years. It's felt over the, the last, the last few months since we've had a bit of sort of the, the change round in the, in the leadership and the organisation. We are moving at a pace that I hadn't seen previously. So I think it will have a, it will have a significant impact on the people of, of Lincolnshire. In terms of your, your question about, is, is there a risk that this will lead to an increase in unmet need? I am really clear that it won't, that we absolutely have the obligation to address need where it arises. The focus of what we're trying to do is to avoid the need arising. We're not trying to avoid meeting the need. The aim is that we don't need to meet the need because it's not there in the first place. The question about are we simply delaying it? You probably have to talk to a health economist about that. I think what, what I would hope is that, that we end up with a combination of essentially, so data that Derek and his team have presented in reports previously shows that in, in Lincolnshire, a lot of people spend a substantial proportion of their lives in ill health. And if, the, the things that we're trying to do are designed to postpone the point at which people get into ill health and then to enable people to manage their lives more effectively while they are in ill health. And the, the, the hope there, and I, I think there's some evidence to support it, is that, yes, through doing that, we will increase people's overall duration of life, but we will significantly reduce the period of ill health of their life. So effectively, putting it a, a little bit crudely, rather than people spending 20 years in ill health before they die, that people will only spend a few years in ill health before you, before they die. And that that period, that shorter period of ill health will cost the state much less than, so, so we're not simply concertina-ing the costs, we are actually reducing the costs.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Overton. Thank you, Martin. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Chairman. And I think, you know, thank you for the, you know, the realignment. And I think that the updated strategy is really good. And I think it has incorporated a lot of the, the future thinking. I think just a brief comment in terms of age and technology. I think my granny should kill me for saying this anyway. But, you know, she's in her 80s. She's on an iPad. She is very tech savvy, I think I could now say. So it's not just about elderly people. I do appreciate some of her friends are quite not as able as she is on her iPhone and stuff. But yeah, it's, it's not just about age. But I, I think this is more about general thoughts. But obviously, you know, we know we've got workforce pressures. We know we've got rising complexity, which we've identified in the strategy. And I suppose how does the TOM future-proof that capacity to deliver both the statutory duties and also the early intervention ambitions at the heart of this new approach? Would be my question.
We were deciding who. And I, I set your point around age. I'm not very tech savvy, so I often have to go to my teenagers to ask them to support me to do, to do technical advances. So your granny's probably better than me. I, I think they're both really, really good questions. I think to, to start with the latter around early intervention and prevention, I think it's how we link in with, with public health as well and using the strength of our communities. And I think we, we talked about a lot of the work that we've done with the, the voluntary sector in terms of maximising the way that we work together. I still think there's a lot of opportunity that we can do as a collective system to start to look at how we can meet people's needs. And a core part of how we've been developing that is with co-production. So this isn't just us saying, this is what we could do differently. This is talking to people who've come into adult social care to say, what could we have done different? What would have made, what would have made a difference in your life? And how could we have intervened earlier? What do you think would have made a difference? So a lot of what we're doing is co-producing that, to think about what that could look like. But I don't know if you wanted to add anything else, Martin?
Yeah, if I can, do you want to do your? So just, just to give a, an example, just to pick up Hayley's point about co-production and the incredible difference that it can make. So, so a number of years ago, I did some work with a, another council looking at their Meals on Wheels service. And the, the service, we're trying to redesign the, how Meals on Wheels was delivered. And they worked on the basis that the most important thing about a Meals on Wheels service is that the time window within which the meal gets delivered is really narrow. You, you know when your lunch is going to arrive. And they spent a lot of time redesigning the service so that it was, it was that, that narrow window in time. And it's quite expensive to, to, to have a service that has narrow time windows. We, you know, we're all familiar with that when we, when we have deliveries and they say, well, we'll be here between seven in the morning and 10 at night. It's cheaper for them to do that than to have a narrow time window. So, so they redesigned the service so that it had a narrow time window. It was quite expensive. Only at that stage did they go and talk to the people who received the service. And the people who received the service said, I actually don't care what time it comes. So long as it comes at lunchtime, not really bothered. Between 12 and 2, even 11.30. What's really important is that it's the same person every day. Because that may well be the only person I get to speak to during the course of the, of, of the day. And if it's the same person, I can actually have a conversation with them. I can have a relationship with them, rather than it being just someone who, who runs in, throws the food down and runs, and runs away. You design the service in a different way. And actually designing the service in a way so it's the same person is probably quite a lot cheaper than designing it so that it's a very narrow time window. It's that kind of thing where co-production enables us to see the service from the perspective of the person drawing on care and support. Very often you can make changes that are actually much more cost-efficient and provide a better quality of care. So, you know, I, I will always support approaches to co-production because if we try to work out the service on our own, we will get it wrong and it'll be more expensive.
Thank you. Is there any more questions on this item? No. Thank you for your questions and comments. That now concludes the discussion on this item. I propose that the information presented be noted and the officers be thanked for their presentation. Does anyone dissent? No, thank you. That is agreed. Agenda item eight, Service Level Performance Reporting Against the Success Framework 2025-2026, Quarter One and Two. This report can be found on pages 87 to 116 of the Agenda Pack. This report summarises the service level performance of adult care against the performance framework 2025-26 as at quarter two. All performances that can be reported in quarter two is included in this report together with the retrospective performance where application, since the performance was last reported in 2025, quarter three. This report will be presented by Martin Samuels, Exec Director of Adult Social Care and Community Wellbeing.
Thank you, Chair. So you've got a report which is, what, about 30 pages long? I'm going to resist the temptation to go through it item by item and slide by slide.
Please, Martin, I, I've read it.
So, so all I'm going to do is, is just point you to page 89 of the, of the pack. So the, the, there's a, a set of bullet points there about key successes. And there's always, or councillor Willie has always already referenced this performance. So just to say a couple of areas. So we are really successful in the proportion of people who, after they've been discharged from hospital, are still there 91 days later. Really key, key measure of the success of our services in terms of, of helping people to make that transition from being in hospital to being back at home. A key element of that is our re-ablement service. We have a very successful re-ablement service which is really effective at reducing people's need. There's, there's, we are, it's under quite a lot of financial pressure, but that's because there are a lot of people going into that service. There is a lot of evidence to show that it reduces the ongoing need that people have for, for care. That's good for individuals, but it also reduces the cost to the council in the longer term. We touched on direct payments. So the last, the last one I'll, I'll touch on briefly is the residential admissions. Although we have one of the older populations in the country and members of the committee will be well aware that the, the proportion of older people, people over the age of 65 in Lincolnshire is much higher than the, the national average. We are doing really quite well in terms of the number of people who go into residential care. terms of the number of people who go into residential care. We are now slightly below average nationally, and we are looking to improve that still further. So there's a number of areas where we're doing quite well. The next paragraph talks about areas for improvement. I'll focus just briefly on the issue of annual reviews. And again, this is one of those areas where we have to be careful with targets where more isn't necessarily better. Again, I would say that this is one where a range is better. So the service for a number of years had the view that the key thing was that the review happened, that people had their annual review, and people indeed have an entitlement to have an annual review. However, what we were finding was that we were spending an awful lot of time making sure that annual reviews happened, and a very, very substantial proportion of those annual reviews led to resulted in the conclusion that the current care package is fine and nothing needs to change. So we spent quite a lot of time with someone, not changing anything. And that's not a bad thing. However, what we are now doing is focusing on those individuals where we think it is most likely that they may need a change, so that we're able to make sure that all of those individuals definitely do have their review, and that we're able to spend a bit longer with those individuals and really look through what their needs are, and not just say, does the care package meet your need today? But say, given what can be reasonably expected may happen in your life over the coming year, is the care package now best placed to minimize any crisis that might otherwise arise during the course of the next year? So although the percentage of people receiving long-term support who've been reviewed, that percentage is falling, I would argue that we are actually being more effective for the individual, the people of Lincolnshire, and that the reviews that aren't happening are largely reviews that would not have led to any action. We do also have a waiting well system in place, so that people who haven't had a review for a while are very clear about if they're starting to have problems, who they can contact, and we will pick them up. And that was really all I wanted to say about the report. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Martin. I would like to invite members now of the committee to make any relevant statements and ask questions. Councillor Cullen, or Councillor Reeve.
Thank you. Totally appreciate what you've just said about reviewing specific cases, long-term care, and it's perhaps a better targeted approach. Is the solution to have a different approach, rather than have this 85% target, do away with that target? Or is it essential that you have a target of some sort? Because just the question arises, are people getting enough support against are people receiving support they don't really need? As I said, most people, it is an ongoing thing, that their care needs don't change dramatically, but if we don't assess it, are we wasting money that could be better targeted elsewhere in certain circumstances? Thank you.
Thank you. I think they're all really good points and really good challenges for us to think about. So a couple of reasons why it's really important to have a target and to monitor that is we look how well we're performing, both with regional but also national neighbours and authorities as well. So it's really important to understand our own performance, but also then to understand how that looks in comparison to other authorities as well. I think, I don't think we should do away with it, because I think people's lives change. So with us working more towards strength-based and being outcome-focused, we would want to see more change in people's annual reviews, where they've achieved their outcomes and they're ready to move on to their next thing that they want to achieve in their life or step out of adult social care. So thinking about reducing dependencies is really important, that each annual review we're looking at, is this least restrictive, proportionate and reasonable to meet the person's needs? So that ongoing assessment of that. There is different ways that I think we can we can look at annual reviews, and one of them is through the trusted assessor model. So if somebody is linked in with one of our health colleagues, for example, and they have an annual health review, actually, can we look at doing both of them together with one professional, rather than one health review and one social care review? And using that trusted assessor to undertake those tasks on behalf of both organisations. And this has seen really good outcomes across the country, and it's something that we're working towards with our stakeholders to develop. So I think there's, I think there's ways we can be more efficient, but I think it's really good to have a target that aligns to other authorities and something that we should strive towards. And I also think it is important, and it's in our statutory duties, that we have annual reviews.
Thank you for just coming back quickly on that one. I totally agree with everything you've just said, that it just seems quite a strange situation. We've got this target of 85%, but as Martin said, he's quite comfortable that we're almost 10% below that, because we're actually getting the required outcomes. So it does seem a bit of a catch-22, that we're achieving what in reality we ought to achieve, but if you're benchmarking against other authorities, then we're falling short in terms of meeting that target, although we're still meeting patients' needs. It's just a bit of a strange situation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Hayley. Councillor Bean.
Thank you, chair. I hear a lot of talk about KPIs and KPTs, and I worked with a lot of those in my previous employment, and quite often I found that they actually got in the way of doing the job effectively. And I just want to be reassured that the KPTs are set based on individuals' need, and that individuals' need is not limited by the KPTs.
So two answers to that. So the first one is, in terms of individuals, we are absolutely focused on the professional judgment of the social worker or other professional that is working with them, that they should be addressing that individual and their needs in the way that is most appropriate, and that that shouldn't be driven by an arbitrary target, it is about the individual. And that what we're always trying to do is to select the performance measures so that they are the things that encourage the operational staff to do the right thing. I want people to do the right thing and be encouraged to do that by the indicators, rather than doing things that meet the indicator but might be wrong for the individual. And then the second part, I'd say, is that, as I said earlier, we are in the process of refreshing all of the indicators as part of the support for the council plan. So that will be looking not only at what are the things that we should be reporting, but also what should the target levels be set at for all of those indicators? And that will come through fairly soon, when the council plan comes to full council.
Thank you, Martin. Councillor Bean, do you want to come back?
Thank you, Martin.
Perfect. Is there any more questions? Councillor Overton.
I'm just thinking about that target again of the annual reviews, and I do I do get what you say, and it's more important that they are used to good effect, rather than just having a survey, and I appreciate that. But if the government arrived and said, where's your figures, would we have a poor rating announced nationally? Sometimes these things are just worth doing, even though, you know, you've got other priorities. Thank you.
So it's a very good question, and I can't give a definitive answer, because in a sense, only CQC can answer what they will do. I think the key thing would be that have we got a clear narrative that shows that we understand what we're doing, we're clear about why we're doing it, and we understand what the impact on individuals is? And I think that if we can express clearly, you know, that line of logic that I went through previously, then I would expect CQC to accept and understand that, because essentially, I think I would want to argue, and I would want to have the data that would support that argument, that we are focusing the resource on the people where it will make a difference, and we're making therefore a better difference for people than if we just did, just happened to go through all the reviews. And I suppose, you know, in an ideal world, yes, I would like to have the resource and all of the social workers to just do everyone to that frequency. Realistically, I haven't, and so I think it's, I would, I will argue, and I'll happily argue this with CQC next week if they challenge me on it, that I'm focusing the available resource to greatest benefit of Lincolnshire.
Thank you. I am certainly convinced by what you say, but I don't know if you saw what happened in the housing with the district councils. They, all of the same arguments were put forward, you know, we're concentrating on the most worst need and all that. And the answer was, well, if you haven't assessed them, how do you know what's the worst need? And you've got a low grade, you know, as a, just because of that one measure. So it might be just a warning shot across the bow, as what we've seen elsewhere. Thank you.
I think that's a really important point, and one of the things that we do is, if people are either waiting to be assessed or waiting for their annual review, we have a really robust waiting well system, where we check on people to make sure that they haven't gone into crisis, or their needs have become so significant that we don't know about that. And that's really important, that people wait well whilst they're either waiting for an annual review or waiting for a service. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hayley, and thank you, councillor Overton. I've just got a quick question, Martin. Oh, no, I'll let councillor Lee go in first. Go on, I forgot you was there.
Absolutely. How could you? It was only a quick one. I just wanted to say, actually, I support what you say about targets, because I think we should always aim up, however good we are, always look to aim up. And I agree with you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. My question, Martin, is One U Lincolnshire only achieved 67, 675 successful quits against the target of 897. This clearly shows an underperformance. What are the reasons for this gap, and what actions are being taken now to make sure the service improves and meets future smoking quit targets?
So you managed to ask me the question just as the DPH just had to leave for another meeting. So I would have to be advised on this. I think the the main issue that we've done with One U Lincolnshire is that we've been focusing them on the total number of interventions. So the point about it being an integrated service is that they deal with people on their on their needs and have a joined-up process. And as I think was shared with the performance report for the ILS earlier, the service has consistently met its target of engaging and having more than 10,000 positive outcomes each year. Clearly, we would like some more of those to be smoking cessation, but I think if the people who are coming forward to the service are benefiting in other ways, then actually that makes a big impact on their on their health. But we can look at how the service is doing, and are there things that we can we can do to tweak it? And I would be clear, in every single service, there is always scope for improvement, and we're always looking for it.
Thank you, Martin. Do you think Derek would be off to email me with the answer and everybody else, if possible, please?
I'm sure we can provide a response.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your questions and comments. This now concludes the discussion on this item. I propose that the information presented be noted, and the officers thanked for their presentation. Does anybody dissent? No. Thank you, that is agreed. Agenda item nine, Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee Work Programme. This is the last item on today's agenda, and the report can be found on pages 117, 124 of the agenda pack. This item enables the committee to comment on the content of its work programme. The report will be presented by Hannah Colclough, scrutiny officer. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. So the next scheduled meeting is on the 7th of January 2026, and we have four scheduled items. We have the externally-commissioned buildings-based daycare re-procurement, the home-based re-ablement recommissioning, the enhanced technology-enabled care services, and the short-break service contract extension. And all four items are due for decision by the executive councillor between the 12th and the 16th of January. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Councillor Lee.
Thanks, chair. I hope you'll bear with me. The Integrated Lifestyle Service, the Future Arrangements, doesn't come back to this committee until the 28th of January, which is eight weeks away, and my understanding is that the consultation finishes any day. I don't know if it's today, but it's any time. Yeah, and I think we should have had impact assessments today, I've made that clear. But eight weeks, and even taking out a week for Christmas and New Year, that's still seven weeks. I would like those impact assessments at the earliest available opportunity. Are we going to be made to wait until the 28th, especially given that this is going to exec very soon, less than a week after that? And my question is, can we please have those impacts assessments sooner? And if we can, how soon will that be?
Thank you, councillor Lee. Hannah, can you answer that one, or will it be Martin?
So we're working on these as quickly as we can, but I suspect that they'll only be ready shortly before the report is due to go to, you know, to come to scrutiny, to go to the executive. So I mean, we might be able to get them to you, I mean, because the papers will get published on the 21st of January. In practical terms, that's about four working weeks away, so we would struggle to do it really any quicker.
My point was, chair, not even the updated ones, can we have the ones that exist now? Because I've looked at that link with the university, and all that really is, it's a summary, it's an evaluation of the service. It doesn't say how the GPs, how other services, social care, might be affected if we lost those services. That's the impact assessment. And if there are currently impact assessments around that that haven't been updated, can we have those?
So I think the last, the last ones that we've had were, they came to exec when the previous contract was considered, and there's a link in the report alongside the one to the university. I forget now exactly when it came to the...
Can you send me that?
Sorry? Yeah, yes, of course.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Thank you, Martin. Councillor Overton.
Thank you. There is an issue that is perhaps new for us, and I just wonder if we should put it somewhere in the agenda, and that's in public health. And I did discuss very briefly with the public health director before he left in the break, and previously, and that is the health impact of the solar industry on our farmland. And he, in speaking to, there is a report that he wrote on the effects on mental health of our residents, and that is, it's been submitted to the inspectorate, so maybe that's one aspect to look at. Another is possible from the electromagnetic radiation of the cables, and also the risk of fire and so on that can arise, and the pollution that can arise from that with water that's been used to cool the battery storage shipping containers. So I'm just wondering if that's something we could maybe look at in the future, the health impacts on our, public health impacts on our communities, so that we can make sure that any mitigating requests, if that's the right word, are put, recommendations, I guess, mitigating recommendations are put forward, and that we can at least consider it as part of the health of our Lincolnshire community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Overton. Is that possible, Martin?
I'm sure we could do a report. I'd have to have a conversation with Derek about the precise timing of it. Derek is likely to be with us until early March, so it's a question of how, I mean, obviously, his team is still here, but we'd have to look at quite when we could put that in.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you. Councillor Reeve.
Thank you. I think this is the right time to raise this. I was at a nursing home visit last week, and this nursing home has managed to get hold of a bladder scanner, and they were telling us that it's a great thing to have, that they don't have to send patients off to the hospital. However, if they have a resident who's under the care of the district health nurse, they are not allowed to use it. They have to call in the district health nurse, who has to bring one of her own with her, who uses theirs, and they're physically, specifically not allowed to use it. And they're saying, what is going wrong in the NHS whereby they cannot just exercise common sense, get on and get it done? And those are the sort of wasteful things I think that need looking at. And also, when they've got a patient that's in distress from that situation, they want a resolution as quick as possible. They don't want to be waiting while the district health nurse is called. So on a financial situation and from a patient care situation, that's the type of thing that needs looking at, as to why it isn't being just a common sense approach, if I can get on the... If that can get on the agenda at some point in the future, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reeve. Martin, is that possible?
So, that's an issue I know quite a lot about. I think I would suggest that it's probably more an issue for the Health Scrutiny Committee rather than this committee. But I mean, there are lots of issues and aspects about it. And I think it would be a good, a good topic for scrutiny to look at. But as I, because it's essentially about the NHS side of things rather than the health, the social care side of things. I think it's probably a health scrutiny issue rather than for this committee.
Thank you, Martin. Councilor Cullen?
Thank you very much, Chair. Just going back to the work programme, if I may ask a question. The agenda for the 27th of February, I see it has eight items, but we have no committee meeting in March. I wonder if we could maybe split the February meeting and have an extra meeting in March? I wonder if that would be possible?
So, it is indeed true that there are a lot of items coming to meetings of this committee. This is because we are doing a lot of recommissioning and there's therefore a lot of contracts where we need to bring them to the committee before there is either a decision by the executive or a decision by councillor, clerk as the executive member. And obviously, a number of those are time-critical. However, the, if you, on that meeting of the 27th, the items, the items five to eight are less time-critical. So, if the committee were minded to have an extra meeting at some point during the course of March, we can easily provide those reports. But clearly, the timing and frequency of meetings is for the committee rather than for officers.
Thank you very much, Martin, thank you.
Is that a proposal, Councilor Cullen, to have the extra meeting in March?
If there is no issue with, you know, the four items, February being quite short, then I think we're all quite happy with having it in February.
I would second that because it'll be a long meeting otherwise. Could I have a show of hands in favour of an extra meeting in March, please? All in favour? Thank you very much, that's carried. If we can talk that out, Martin. Thank you, Councilor Cullen. Councilor Lee?
It's only a quick one, you're not getting away yet. I think about the bladder scanners, I think it's definitely a health thing. I'm trained to use one. I suspect it might be around having someone who's been trained to be able to interpret the results because it's only like a thing you put gel on and you go like that and it shows if someone...
That's what a bladder scanner is.
I know it is, I was shown one. And their staff are even able to catheterise the patients to relieve the problem. Unless the patient is under the care of the district health nurse, they are not allowed to use it.
Right. I suspect it should go to health, though, not here.
Thank you very much. Is there any more questions before I move on? Lovely. Thank you for your presentation, Hannah, I really appreciated that. I would now like to invite members, hang on a minute, excuse me. I'm trying to go, I'm getting there, I'm getting there, sorry, I didn't cross it out. Hang on. Thank you for your questions and comments. This now concludes this discussion. Our actions to review the work programme and highlight any additional scrutiny activity which could be included and for consideration in the work programme. Suggested proposal, I move that we note the report and approve the existing work programme. Does anyone dissent? Lovely, thank you very much, that is agreed. Before I close the meeting, I would just like to say thank you so much for everybody coming today. I really appreciate your scrutiny. Thank you to all the officers and I wish you all a very Merry Christmas. Thank you, the meeting is now closed.